Okay, the meeting is open?
Oh, they couldn't do that.
Wait, they can? Hello? The meeting's coming to order, thank you. Okay, the way we start each time is with public comment. So if there's something that you want to tell the board about that isn't on the agenda, now would be the time to do it. And if you're going to speak before the board for any reason tonight, please come right over to that microphone and give your name and state your business from there. That microphone is what connects you to FCTV so that people at home can hear what we hear. And you have to sort of speak up, so that would be good, so we can all hear. So is there anyone who has something they want to tell the board that's not on the agenda or comment on? Well, I have a little something. The board has appointed a new member, Pam Harding Barrett, who served on this board for at least eight years, I believe, and did a good job, had a health problem, and she resigned. And the Select Board and the Planning Board met together last week, and we interviewed three people, and we chose Tom Zine, who's here tonight and joining the Planning Board. And he now has to go through quite an ordeal. He has to come to these meetings until the next town meeting in May, and then he has to run for this office again if he chooses to do it. And then, a year later, when Pam's term is up...
(laughing) Oh, no!
Right? He has to run again.
I didn't know that. Oh, that's terrible.
Right, yeah, it is. It's quite a thing to have to do. I think at the point that I filled a vacancy, I think I only had to run once more, that was it. But by then, you run as an incumbent, so welcome, Tom. You're here, I'm glad.
Privilege being here, thank you.
That explains why Charlie didn't want to keep going.
Right.
It's a huge commitment.
Oh, it is, it's a big commitment. Well, we had very good candidates, we were really, really fortunate. And one of the candidates has chaired a committee that Paul Dryer served on for coastal resiliency, and he actually is an expert in that, it was part of his professional life, but he's also an expert in urban planning, he has tremendous expertise. And he will probably, I hope, be helping us as an advisor on the local comprehensive plan, which the Planning Board is responsible for running a planning, town-wide planning process, and getting as much input as we can, and coming up with a good plan. And we will be doing that in the very foreseeable future, and Charlie has agreed to help us with that. So, first minutes, Paul.
M.C.R., I recommend approval of the minutes of October 22nd, 2024, with some minor corrections.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First thing on our agenda tonight is a Planning Board decision.
There were just six votes on that, right? Six-zero. Tom can't vote.
He can't vote because he doesn't get...
But it is approved.
Yeah.
But he did not attend the meeting as a member of the board.
Yeah.
So the vote is six-zero and approval.
So it's six-oh and approval, not seven-oh.
Oh, I didn't count it. Okay, thank you. Who's doing that stuff? Am I taking the notes? Oh, you have a lot to do. Our town planner is at the precinct three meeting in advance of town meeting next week, so that's where he is. And Melinda is the assistant town planner, and they work very closely together, she's very well qualified. And now, first order of business is a Planning Board decision. We've already closed on that, and we can go right ahead. We had asked for a positive motion on the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution's application to make some modifications in the plan that we had previously approved, and to give them a special permit related to those modifications. So we have that decision, we have that motion, if you could.
Okay, on my copy, it has sections in bold print, so I'm just going to read those, but the rest of the record will be included in anything going forward. Okay, draft, November 11th, 2024, motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, who we to modify the previous October 25th, 2022, approval under section 240, 12.2, site plan review of the zoning bylaw and the issuance of a special permit pursuant to section 245.1A, previously section 242.1, exempt uses of the zoning bylaw to construct a two-story waterfront building in two phases located at 86 Water Street with the following findings. On October 25th, 2022, the applicant, Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, who obtained site plan review approval under section 240, 12.2, special permit under section 240, 2.1, exempt uses to allow the complex for waterfront access to exploration research seawater project, which included the replacement of their existing dock, removal of several existing buildings on the property, and the construction of a new three-story adaptable and resilient waterfront building. The applicant now proposes several modifications to the site plan review approval and special permit that will reduce overall project impacts and will make it more conforming with the zoning bylaw. Specifically, the new approach includes the demolition of the Iceland laboratory, Alvin High Bay Smith Connection Connector, the Flume, and the Smith Building. With the demolition of the Smith Building, which was previously intended to stay on the site, the new 42,851-square-foot waterfront building can be relocated on the site still entirely landward of the bulkhead, and the electrical transformer can be placed in different locations, no longer needing the special permit relief from the front yard setback requirement. Meanwhile, with more room being available for the new two-story waterfront building, the applicant has reduced the new building height from 55 feet to 45 feet, which no longer needs a special permit relief from the maximum building height restriction. In addition, the applicant now proposes to phase the seawater project. In the first phase, the applicant will demolish the Iceland building, Alvin High Bay, the Flume, and a seawood portion of the Smith Connector, and will completely replace the dock and construct a high bay building to support immediate dock operational needs. In the second phase, the applicant will demolish the Smith Building and the remainder of the Smith Connector and construct the new two-story waterfront building. As set forth in the conditions below, commencement of phase one shall constitute a substantial use of this special permit and shall vest the special permit. The applicant is still seeking a special permit to continue to allow the same reduced number of parking spaces on a property as exists today. Additionally, the applicant is still seeking a special permit to allow relief from the overall impervious coverage limit of 70% by structure paving and parking. All the findings specific to section 240, 12.1, special permits of the zoning bylaw as found in the October 22nd, 2022, site plan review and special permit decision remain unchanged. Waivers, section 240, 14.3B, landscape plan required to waive the requirement that a landscape plan be submitted with the application for site plan review. Therefore, given the above and the conditions to be imposed below, the Planning Board finds the application for site plan review modification, special permit modification for the complex for waterfront access to exploration and research seawater project will be in harmony with the general purposes and intent of this chapter in that the proposed proposal will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Conditions, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Two, the applicant shall obtain an approved street opening permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. Three, pursuant to section 240, 12.1I of the zoning bylaw, the special permit shall lapse three years from the date it is granted, November 12th, 2024, if substantial use thereof has not sooner commence, except for good cause. Commencement of the work for phase one of the approval plan shall constitute a substantial use and shall vest this special permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
In second, made in second, and is there any comment that you'd like to make?
No, I think it's a good plan.
It is an excellent plan, we really liked it when we saw it. I'd like to point out, I'm sure the board is all aware, that the two decisions have been combined into one, so it's the site plan and the special permit approval that we're giving now. So we're ready to vote? No further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
And once again, it's six because Mr. Zine wasn't here, right, to hear the presentation, so he doesn't vote on it. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing, or would have had a public hearing, from Stephen Marsh, a definitive plan application to create a three-lot subdivision at Old Barnstable Road. The applicant has requested a continuance to December 10th, 2024. This matter has to be dealt with by November 26th, so we do need a continuance in order to move it up beyond that amount. Could we have a motion?
I move that Mr. Marsh's request to extend the deadline on this application be accepted by the Planning Board.
So a second? Yep, second, any discussion?
Can I just clarify one thing? So we're doing two things here, we're voting on the continuance to December 10th and the deadline decision to be extended to December 31st.
Ah, thank you. Okay, to the 31st.
Is there...
It's on the second sheet.
Oh, okay. I blew right by him.
That's all right. So just vote on those two things, you can do it together.
Okay, so I modify my...
Your motion?
Thank you, my motion.
Right.
That it be extended to December 31st.
And continued to December 10th.
John?
I just have a question. I was not here for the last meeting with Mr. Marsh, so I don't know if I have to abstain. I was here for the previous meetings, but...
So you can watch it online if you would like, and fill out a form with our office, and then you can be continued in on the discussion if you choose to.
So, right now, do I abstain?
Um, yeah, that's probably the best thing right now, because it won't really make a difference.
All right, thank you.
Did we even discuss anything on this the last time? We did?
Uh, we did. They had reached an agreement with the...
Oh, yes, they announced they had reached an agreement, okay, that's why they...
And had put land into conservation, and it changed the turnaround and the plan.
It was very quick.
Yeah, there was quite a change, so it was in harmony with the neighborhood. The good thing about that. Okay, so we have a motion to continue and to move this to the 31st for our next time, so...
Needs a new second, so I second.
You second?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go, all in favor, who are able to vote?
Aye.
Aye? So that's enough to pass, if that's five?
Yeah.
And Mr. Marsh will be here on the 10th, I guess. Next, this one is much more interesting, Mr. Clower. Next up, we have Kevin Clower, representing on behalf of the Cape Cod Young Men's Christian Association and Lutheran Church, I gather, the site plan review application to construct a 68,470-square-foot YMC A recreational and educational facility at 485 Brick Hill Road, much awaited by the town.
Before Kevin starts, Paul needs...
Notices?
M.C.R., notice of this public meeting was published on April 5th, 2024?
No.[773.13][773.13](laughing) It's got to be a typo.
And nine of those are sent by regular mail. The second notice was published on October 25th, 2024.
Let me see.
That might be right, Melinda, because that was the referral.
Oh, yes, that's right, because it was, it was before, and we referred it to the Cape Cod Commission. Thank you, Kevin.
And we had a presentation on it at that time, before it went to the Commission.
We actually didn't make any presentation.
Oh, we saw pictures.
Not here.
Not here, because we weren't allowed to.
I don't know.[807.54][807.54](laughing)
But I'm happy to share them to you now.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, for the record, my name's Kevin Clower, I'm before you tonight, representing the YMCA and its long-awaited application for this project. I always risk getting myself in trouble when I say something like this, but there are projects that I'm prouder to be a part of than others, and this is one of them. This is something I think is very important to the town. I'm joined tonight by essentially our full team. I'd like to make a few introductions. We have Stacy Pugh, the president and CEO of YMCA Cape Cod, we have Rick Venuccio, the project manager of Clear Path Advisors, we have Stu Clark, who's the civil engineer from Green Seal Environmental, Jen Harkerman, who is our architect, rather, from SV Design, and Emily Buck, our traffic consultant from Bowman Consulting. We have what is admittedly a rather extensive presentation, but there's a lot of information that I feel like we need to cover, and we'll try to do that as succinctly as we can. And I'm going to do an introduction, I'm going to turn it over to some of the team members, and would of course be willing and happy to address any questions, either during the process or after the presentation's concluded. We're before you tonight seeking site plan review approval for the proposed development of 485 Brick Hill Road. As this board is aware, this project has been in the works for quite some time. The YMCA, in connection with some local groups, have worked to find a feasible location. We're currently under agreement to purchase 6.13-acre portion of 485 Brick Hill Road, which is owned by the Christ Lutheran Church of Falmouth. This board recently approved an A&R plan, which divided the existing 9.85 acres. So there is an intention to create a shared parking with the church, which will go over during our site plan process. The capital campaign on this is underway, the local permitting process is now really beginning in earnest. And as this board likely saw, there was a recent donation to this project of $10 million by a local business owner, which puts us very well on our way towards our fundraising goal. I believe that brings the total to 23 million to this point, give or take, with a target of 28 million and an expected completion total of slightly more than that. So this project recently received approval from the Cape Cod Commission, that was unanimous approval, as a development of regional impact. The proposed development on the 6.13 acres will include a recreational facility, which has a health center, gymnasium, and most importantly, a pool. The footprint of this project is 43,406 square feet, with an overall gross floor area of just over 68,000. That's if all the phases are constructed. Phase two includes a gym with a suspended track that may not be constructed as part of the initial construction process. So this location, 485 Brick Hill, is located in the AGAA zoning district, which is also within a water resource protection district. It's abutted to the northeast by Falmouth High School, and to the west by the Village at Brick Hill, which is a 40B development. A project of this scope requires approval through multiple levels. Cape Cod Commission, as I mentioned, does a development of regional impact. This board will be required for site plan review and also a special permit pursuant to 240, 14, 1I, 5B, which would allow for parking in the front yard. The zoning board of appeals will need special permits from them as well, which include private club not-for-profit, which is 240, 6.1B, lot coverage in excess of 15% within a water resource protection district, which is 240, 7.7B, 4E, and also parking reduction and shared parking under 240, 14.1F3. As I mentioned at a recent Select Board meeting, we are at what we hope is the beginning of the end stage here for the permitting and design of this project. Our hope is to have shovels in the ground next fall. One of the biggest hurdles that we've had to contend with in doing this is wastewater discharge within the water resource protection district. We came to this board some time ago considering a change to the town bylaw, but while that's not entirely within the site plan review purview, I do want to address it because I think it's important for your consideration. So the water resource protection district limits wastewater discharge to 7.5 gallons per day per thousand square feet of land area. So approximately one acre of land would allow for effectively a three-bedroom home. The proposed design flow for the YMCA significantly more, it's 7,612 gallons per day. Based on that calculation, we would require an additional 17 acres of land. Finding an additional 17 acres of land anywhere, let alone within the protection district, is challenging. However, we've been working with town staff over the last few months, and we arrived at what we believe is a really creative solution to address this. There is adjacent to the high school a 19.87-acre parcel of land owned by the town. We've been discussing with town council and town department heads about assigning groundwater discharge rights from that parcel to the YMCA, such that that parcel would not be developed in any way that would require any sort of discharge on that site. That assignment provides more than sufficient discharge rights to the YMCA for their overall project. This concept's not without precedent. Title V allows for banking and assignment of certain nitrogen credits, and though this is a local regulation that we're dealing with and not Title V, that concept provided the basis for this request. Last week, the Select Board approved unanimously to approve that assignment. That assignment has been signed and is being held intact, eschewed by town council pending the completion of permitting and the purchase of this parcel by the YMCA. So that's been what we've seen as the largest impediment to this project. And now with the town assigning the rights for that parcel, such that it will never be developed in a way that would produce wastewater on that site, assigning it to the YMCA, that provides us with more than enough wastewater discharge rights for this project. Yes, Ms. Harris?
Kevin, is that parcel adjacent to this? Does it abut it?
It is very close to it. It's not a direct abutting parcel, but under what we took this concept from, it doesn't need to be. And the town, including town councils, reviewed and approved this.
And is it without road access, that parcel?
It is currently without road access, but it's adjacent to the high school, so it could be developed as part of the high school if it was ever added to the school committee.
Thank you.
Yep. So, as I've mentioned, there's a lot of information we'd like to discuss, including our site plans and architectural plans. I'd like to hand it over to some of the other team members. Following the presentation, as I mentioned, we'll be happy to discuss and address any questions the board might have. I'm going to hand it off now to Stu Clark from Green Seal Environmental, who's going to begin walking through the site plans with you. Really happy to be here tonight, thank you for your time, and look forward to addressing your questions following the presentation.
Thank you, there's no need to rush, I think that many people in town are very interested in it and want to hear it.
I have a question. That green portion there, is that the town property that you're saying...
So it's actually this parcel right here?
Ah, that one, okay, thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, for the record, Stuart Clark with Green Seal Environmental. I'm going to run you through the civil end of the project, pavement, parking, pedestrian movements and such, so you can get an understanding of where we're going with design.
Is this just up and down with the...
No, left and right. Left and right? As you can see, we'll just go through an existing conditions to start with. That's the site here, the church is here, and the school is obviously there. Left and right. I apologize, we're going the wrong way. We are going the right way. All right, the existing condition of the site is shown here, this is the red line represents the A&R subdivision you guys approved a couple weeks back. Comes out to 6.13 acres. As part of the Cape Cod Commission, we had to go and locate significant trees on this parcel, those are trees over 12 inches, I think hardwoods over 12 inches, softwoods over 14 inches. And so we've located them on this parcel. Additionally, this is a typical New England pine oak forest, nothing really special here. It's underlaid with Henley soils, which is a Class A sandy loam soil, hydroclass A. The site does not have any resource areas, meaning no wetlands, no flood zone, no priority habitat for wildlife. There is one area here, which I have demarcated with the dash line, and this is the state surface water protection zone. This side of the line is B, up here is C, and there is no designation in this area. I'll get to that when I get down to the septic system, so we can see it a little bit better. So, as Kevin mentioned, we are mandated to comply with zoning, right? With all the impervious area, we come out to about 37.9% of coverage. In the aqua protection zone, you can do between 15 and 40 if you get a special permit through the zoning board, and I think Kevin alluded to that earlier, and we are seeking that. So that was another reason we elected to do the shared parking with the church, so we can move some of that burden off of this piece of land and share it between the two. There's other more, there's other benefits to that, other than just the impervious area. It helps out the church, because the YMCA will be maintaining that parking area and developing it, so they'll get the use out of it, and it won't really cost them much. So, and I think the max lot coverage is 20, we have 16, we got 20% open space, we're right at the building height, we have the landscape buffer, so I guess all in all, we meet all the requirements for the zone, for this use. Kevin did allude to the septic, I made an argument to the board of health relative to hydraulic loading versus mass solids loading, but we have rectified that with the land agreement next door, so you don't really need to see that language, that's from an older plan set. This is what we plan to do. Basically, we have our 40,000-square-foot building here, it's two floors and most of it, the big pool over here is obviously just one floor, there's a pool area here, this is the gymnasium Kevin referred to maybe being done at a later date, depend on funding. We have outdoor activity areas along this side of the building. And to access this site, we have 150-foot of frontage on Brick Hill, a public road. We're going to access it with a serpentine driveway, it's 24 feet wide. When you get to the end of the driveway, you can either go right to any one of the drive aisles to park, or you could come left here and do a drop-off. There's car drop-off here, and we also have a bus drop-off here, because we anticipate that there may be buses from the school if there's a swimming meet or something like that, and they'll need to come to this facility. We have nine-by-18 parking spots, 24-foot drive aisles, in between each one is a 10-foot wide median strip, which will be vegetated with trees for some shading and cooling of that pavement. One of the neat features we have here is a central collection aisle for pedestrians, so they'll get out of their car and they'll come up here, and each one of these will be a raised speed table with, you know, the paintings, the yield paintings on them, so it'll be very well demarcated where the people are moving, so they're not up and down and all through the aisles, and especially at a Y where there could be some young children. So we wanted to give them one central place to collect, and you walk right up to the front courtyard here that I'm sure Jen will talk to you a little bit more. We have, let me just refer to my notes, oh yeah, we have seven parking spaces over here designated for commuter spots, that was a request from the Cape Cod Commission, so we allocated seven spots to commuter parking. On this side, we have our EV stations, we'll have four completely installed EV stations, and we'll have another 14 that are ready, meaning they'll be piped with conduit, but we won't put the stations in yet, that will be need-based, if we see that there's more of a need. Our fear is we didn't want to put out EV stations to have them sit there 30 years and not be used, and then we'll have to replace them when they need to be used. So that's pretty much it for parking. Oh, we got handicap parking here, four spots here, four spots here, and three spots down at the church. Obviously, those will all be ADA compliant with ramps, signage, et cetera. Moving on, I think, this is just, this is a slide from the Cape Cod Commission presentation, basically just talking about the programming that you're going to have at the Y. Community health center is very, very important, wellness, teenage. Again, the gross floor area is 68,000 because a portion of it is two stories, and the building footprint is 43,000 square feet, outdoor recreation areas we talked about earlier.
Sir, would you like to take questions completely at the end?
I will take them, what do you think is the best? Yeah, I can take them now, if they have them.
This is a conversation, the board's...
Great, we've got some questions, Paul.
I had a quick question. You mentioned the Cape Cod Commission requested seven commuter parking spaces. What's a commuter parking space in this case?
A commuter parking is if two people come to work at a time, it's just not for a single vehicle.
Carpool.
Carpool. Can I say commuter? I meant carpool.
Yeah.
How do you determine that? I don't know.[1746.04][1746.04](laughing)
It's a hard thing to regulate, but I think we're just going to have signage up there that says commuter parking only.
Surely we can have a compact car only spot?
Yeah.
Was there any thought given when you were designing the parking to do solar over some of the parking area?
We did, but we were planning to put solar on the roof.
Anyone else?
Stealing all the thunder.
On the four EV charging stations...
Yes, sir.
Will each charging station handle two vehicles or one?
Yes, each, well, there'll be two charging stations, the dual ads, so one, two, three, four cars, four spaces.
So four cars at a time or eight cars at a time?
Four cars at a time, sir.
And will they be fast charging?
Uh, they won't be the type two. I'm not really...
Right now, they're just coming...
I'm not an EV guy. I'm not an EV guy, so.
The rest of my conduits, they're going to have four active charging stations.
Bob, did you have a question?
No, mine was about the solar.
Okay, and this is a.
I have one. Have you discussed a bus stop with Cape Cod Rapid Transit at the?
I don't believe we have.
YMCA?
I don't believe we're coming on part of the choosing route.
Yeah, I don't.
They're pretty commended about adding stops, and with a facility this size, it might be worthwhile.
Right, it might be something.
Do you have a space to accommodate a bus coming in? Because that's part of the overall plan, so.
I'm talking about a regular stop on their route, which they accommodate.
Yeah, they come up as part of the regional Cape Cod Commission, so.
Because that would also serve along Brick Hill for other stops, too, which they don't.
How do you make that?
Yeah.
Tom?
Can I talk about lighting or stormwater drainage?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, yeah, regarding that, in D night.
Look, Kevin, this is a public hearing, so I realize most of you are participants in the design, but if you have an expanded comment or a question? Not now. Okay.
Actually, I do have a question. I'm sorry. You actually talked about the outside activity. So I wrote, I have a question. The outdoor activity areas are located on the west side of the site plan. Can you elaborate on the type of activities? And will there be any need for any noise mitigation?
Tom, if you would, could you just wait for the architect to speak to that portion of it? Okay. I don't want to take all her material. I just wanted to show a larger blow-up of the parking area, showing the central path up the middle. There will be a sidewalk and curb connecting to the new sidewalk on Brick Hill, which connects all the way over to the high school. So we have the connectivity to get people up and out of their cars and into the building. So I think we've done a good job of looking into that. I think the next, oh, the park analysis, this is what Kevin was referring to, is the reduction in parking. We have, we're asking for a reduction to, can't see it from there, but I, yeah, we're asking for a reduction, but that'll be through the zoning board.
Right.
This is the other half of the building, the backside of the site plan. And this, I just wanted to show this, because it has the EV charging stations over here. Over here, we're going to have some, a waste, a solid waste dumpster area screened, so the trucks can back right in and get the solid waste. And we're going to have this path that goes all the way around the building. It's a 25-foot wide gravel path. It's going to be reinforced with the GeoGrid, so it can take fire trucks. So now the fire department has access all the way around the building. Excuse me. And this is where we're going to, the septic system's going to be. On this side of the building, which would be the west side, that we have a dry riverbed to collect water from the roof runoff, and it's going to run down this channel, and there'd be little bridges across there for a nice architectural feature. One thing I didn't mention is there will be a small retaining wall along this area, just due to grades. At its highest point, it's going to be about five and a half feet tall. But there's just, there's like a deep hole right here in the topography, and then it tapers out on each end. So five, there'll just be five courses of those ready rock wall blocks you've seen.
Isn't that back on to?
Yes, ma'am.
A housing development?
The housing development is on this side. I don't know.
Right, on the west side?
Yes.
Yeah.
You can see, I have it right here. This is the housing development. This is from their record plans. I don't, I don't know if their as-built plans match this, but this was from the, I mean, the permitting plans. They have, they have an infiltration area over here, and they left us a water stub over here, which I'll be getting to soon. Okay, yeah. And we just looked at that. Other thing is, you know, there's going to be natural areas still towards the back of the property. They were going to keep, try to keep a wildlife corridor between the villages at Brick Hill Development and ours, a 20-foot migration corridor there. Again, we have the centralized parking landscape. We have a landscape architect onboard, and they're going to use native plantings, pollinator species, drought tolerant grasses, just so we don't have to use a lot of irrigation water. Going to have the solar-ready roof and conservation batteries and the EV parking spots. This is the site utility plan. This is where I was talking about, will be, there's a stub down here at some point for us to connect to. That was part of the development or agreement, you know, with the 40B. We're going to run this water line up. It's an eight-inch water line. We're going to have to have probably an eight-inch going into the building for fire suppression, maybe a two-inch for domestic water. We'll have a main over here. One of the comments from the engineering review or the water department review is they want to see us loop this water back down. So we're probably going to grab it here and come back down the driveway to the church and reconnect to Brick Hill, so we have a loop through there, which is a better system. We're planning to use natural gas for heating, so there'll be a gas line up there. All our electric will be underground, and it's going to run up under the sidewalk up to a transformer in this area. Obviously, at this point in permitting, we haven't designed it all yet. And that's probably the, yeah, that's about it for utilities plans. So now we're just going to talk a little bit about the septic system. Because this is an aqua protection zone, and plus we had to meet a 5 milligram per liter site-wide for the Cape Cod Commission for nitrogen, we elected to go with a nitro system. And it will, it will get us down to 5 milligrams, about 4.6 milligrams per liter site-wide using their worksheet, their calculation worksheet. 10 milligrams for TSS and 30 milligrams of VOD. So we're cleaning up the water pretty good before we're discharging it. And I know the stormwater's in here, too, and we'll talk about the stormwater design in a little bit. But there's rain gardens, subsurface infiltrators, impervious pavers. But I wanted to get on to the rest of the stormwater. Excuse me, the septic system. So the septic system will consist of tanks, subsurface tanks here. There will be one will be aerated, so it's aerobic. And then the next tank will be anaerobic, and then it goes to a nitrogen degassing chamber and off to a pump station, which will pump it up and over to this field for disposal. Again, I wanted to bring you eyes to the surface water protection zone. We endeavor to keep most or almost all of our system outside of the surface water protection zone. There's a little bit in the C zone, but there's none in the B zone. When the DEP, these zones, the DEP regulates what you can do as for use. You can't have a, if you were in the zone A, you can't have a cemetery there. You can't have a junkyard. But when you get way out to the sea, it's very limited, and our use is allowed. There are Title V use.
What kind of system did you say it was? Did you, you chosen the kind of system?
Yes, we're going with the nitro system.
Nitro?
Nitro. It's from Clean2U. It's the same one they used at the College of Light Opera, and it's the same one they used next door at the villages of Brick Hill.
Thank you.
Same system. Okay, now we're on to the stormwaters. The stormwater is going, we've endeavored to collect it in a lot of small spots instead of having one robust central station. So we're going to be collecting it off the parking lot into these little storm, these storm rain gardens. And these are, they're called focal point media. They filter out a lot of the nutrients. And underneath each one of these, there will be arctic infiltration, and overflows will go to these larger infiltration fields. I guess if you were going to say we have one big one, it's going to be in this middle island. It's going to be a rain garden. We have a little wildlife island in the middle of it. It's going to take water, all the water from the roof runoff, which is 40,000 square feet of water. It's almost an acre, and a little bit of the road runoff, not much. Most of the road runoff comes and goes into these systems. They're either treated in a deep sump catch basin with oil grit separated prior to infiltration, because you need to get to 44% of total suspended solid removal. And so we have one, two, three of these systems as, the grading, as you can see, starts up here high, and right here at the church, it's low. So I grabbed some in the, you know, in the first one, in the second one, and all the overflow goes down to the third one. And there's just one little attenuation pond that, according to the hydraulic model, might get water in it during the 100-year storm, like a foot. Not much water goes into that one. Underneath each one of these, there will be another, and underneath this main rain garden, there will be an infiltration system there, too, just for added storage and better infiltration into the groundwater. And as I said, it's a Class A soil out there. It's all nice sand. We've done perk tests out there. We've done test pits out there, so we have, we have a record of that. Moving on, here's the backside of the building. It's just kind of, again, shows the dry swale. These, this area here is going to be pervious pavers. There's a water collection underneath that to drain that, water collection under that to drain that into this channel. This area here will be a playground area with a rubber surface. Am I stealing your stuff? Again, that'll have some drains to go there. Over here, we just had this one spot we couldn't get the water to go to, so we're just going to put a little beehive there. It's basically all grass in here. It's just going to be a low spot where it's going to try to pond, and we don't want that. Next slide. Okay, now this is getting into the sweat path analysis. We contacted the fire department, and we got their truck, their largest truck, and we made sure that we could navigate that truck through our site. We looked at two scenarios here. One was to go all the way around the building, which it shows it can do. And the other was to go through the bus loop, which it does, but I forgot to show the little truck on there, so I apologize for that. These dotted rings, these are 100-foot setbacks from the fire department connection, because they like to have a hydrant within 100 feet. So in case they have to fight a fire, they can come out here and connect to this hydrant, connect to the building, and support the sprinkler system. So we have one hydrant here and one watering here. This is just demonstrating compliance with that. All right, on we go. Oh, the landscape plan. I didn't get a lot of detail here, but it's going to be tree-lined. And there's going to be, it's going to, a robust planting plan. We're going to have some fencing along this side, top of the wall, along this side, because this is the closest house on that adjacent property. And this is a bus stop, so we're going to have, you know, fencing along there with plantings to try to screen that. Again, then we have just periodic little chunks of fence along here to screen these other, these other homes down here. The central island's not shown correctly, because they haven't updated it yet. Because when we went through Cape Cod Commission, they asked us, I had the roof runoff going to an infiltrator up here, but they requested that all the roof runoff go to this rain garden, which necessitated it getting larger. But that's just the planting plan. We have, we have a schedule. I, I don't know if I included that in the package, but we do have that.
Have you made your plant choices?
Huh?
Have the plant choices been made?
Do I have them?
No, I wonder, have they been made?
Yes, they have been made.
Ah, thank you. Thanks.
And then, again, based on Tom's question, here's the site lighting plan. Around the back of the building, we plan no lighting. There's going to be lights over each egress door, which is just good sound engineering. You need to get people out if you have a problem. There'll be streetlights represented by these circles. The brightest spot is right at, right at the base of the light. That's going to be about two-foot candles. But overall, the parking lot's going to be around one-foot candle, which is not real bright, because we do have the neighbors, but it's bright enough to be safe. We have lights, acorn lights along this side, again, and it shows that, you know, there'll be zero light spill on the neighboring property, which you can see a little bit better here, because I opened up that window a little bit more. Other than that, we have typical erosion controls. The contractor's going to have to submit a SWIP, because this is over one acre. So prior to construction, he'll have to prepare and submit a SWIP for stormwater protection or during construction. I did mention a little bit about the fencing and buffering. We do have some steeper grades over here. I mentioned the wall. And I think that finishes my presentation. Is there any other questions before I turn it over to Jen's next?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
How many pools are in the main building?
How many pools? There's one main pool, and then one warm water pool for, for like exercise and hydro, whatever people do and.
How big is the main pool?
Yeah, I'll let Jen talk on.
Just curious, you've ever had to empty the pool? What would you do with the chlorinated water?
I meant to mention that. There is going to be, you can see it up here just slightly. There is a holding tank here for the backwash, because this is obviously a system periodically backwashing. We cannot put that water into the septic system. So we have a 10,000-gallon holding tank over there. But it won't take the whole pool, so they just have to keep pumping that out, if they're going to drain the whole pool.
Well, you're upstream from Long Pond. That's the reason I asked a question.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
It's pre-chlorinated.
Bob?
No.
So just to, Mr. Trig, to clarify on that, the pool wouldn't be drained into the groundwater? Ever. So if it had to be drained, it would be done through the holding tank? There's no scenario in which that becomes part of the groundwater discharge?
I have a comment. I'm really taken with the way you've planned for people to walk from the parking lot to the building. It looks great on paper. I assume that it's going to work really well, and it will look good. For the people who first drive in to the parking lot, how are they going to know until they become familiar with the site, that that's there? Will there be signage or?
Yeah, there'll be signage, and it's going to be marked up pretty well. Because each one of these speed, oh, there it is. Each one of these speed ones will have, you know, the yield paints on here, so you'll see it coming up. There'll be diamonds indicating yield. There'll be signage, say pedestrian crossing.
Great. And zero light spill. That sounds like hubris. Are you sure, zero?
Well, it's zero foot candles. We can't, we can't spill on out of the property. I mean, you obviously can look over and see light, but the light's not going to be directly onto their property.
No, but they'll, okay.
So maybe spill's not the right word. I apologize if there's any confusion.
But it's dark sky compliant, right?
That's, that's correct. I forgot to mention that. That's another Cape Cod Commission requirement. So they're all LED lights, too. I forgot to mention that. All right. Lot of fun stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.
Hi, everyone. For the record, I'm Jen Hockerman from SV Design. We're the architects working with the Cape Cod Y. So the first approach to the design of this building was to make sure that it really was in character with Falmouth and with the Cape. We did not want a building that despite its mass, uh, didn't look like it belonged here and wasn't representative of the community that it's serving. And so the way we went about breaking up such a large programmatic area is to visually create these four sort of gabled pieces. And there's different programs held within them. But essentially, we've taken the Cape Cod vernacular of this gabled piece that has shingles on the front and clapboard on the side and created these four pieces. So you can see one sort of facing the parking lot, um, and then three on the left side of the rendering. And then we've connected all of these sort of more solid pieces with glossy connectors. So it helps especially from this front view to really take the scale of the building down into something that feels more natural with Cape Cod. So these are some other renderings. The one in the upper left is that front entry piece. We've used these splayed wood columns that sort of are reminiscent a bit of the scrubby pines that are in this area and also of, um, sort of that pier construction and sort of sand dune fencing construction. We'll show a couple of photos in a moment. Um, to have a, a canopy over the front, at the bottom of the canopy is a wood product. Again, really trying to keep that warmth and scale. As you walk around the building, you can see in the lower left corner, you have those three gables that I spoke about. This is sort of heading back toward these individual landscape program areas. And when we get to the landscape plan, I'll talk a little bit more about what happens in each of those areas. But the idea is that they are designed both for specific functions and age groups, but also to allow a lot of flexibility in the YMCA's use. As Stu mentioned, there is a, uh, footpath, um, and also fire lane that loops the entire building. So what you see in the upper right corner is the back of the building. That's the gymnasium and the second pool. So it allows for a good walking path for folks as well. And then on the lower right corner, that is the walking path as it heads toward the pool. That pool facade is what faces toward the high school. So it is quite a distance between them and the next building. And I'll show, um, some elevations where we're really trying to break up that long facade of the pool by creating a screen across the top. And it's a perforated metal screen so that it lets some light through the windows, but doesn't create a lot of glare on the water for the swimmers. Uh, and it also, uh, is able to break up that facade between, um, the warm water pool, the long cool water pool, and then the front entry function, which is the health center. These are some of those inspiration images, um, that sort of inspired that front entry design. That front entry is, um, about six hundred feet off Brick Hill Road, so it's not visible from the road. But as you pull in to that driveway, it's a little bit, as you mentioned, serpentine, trying to slow people down. And then as you sort of come into the back corner of the parking lot and you really see the Y, that's when the view corridor opens up and you have this direct view into the front, right into the front door. Couple other inspiration images. So, uh, this is that floor plan. Here's the entry over here. So you'd come into this sort of glassy piece. This piece over here is that solid shingle wall that you saw that has the gable front. This is the health center up here. And then there's different program areas serving different ages and functions. These are these three gable pieces, again, with these sort of glossy connectors. We've, uh, used these four gable pieces to create this massing on the front. And then we have this taller two-story space that is both the pool, the gym, um, and then the locker rooms are in the center here. But taking these flat roof bigger pieces, pulling them toward the back of the building, so they're not really visible from the front. And then allowing the building to have some of these jogs that you see sort of here and at the back to help break up that massing. And as, as you mentioned, there's a lot of sort of, with the pools and the gym, there's a lot of double height space. Um, so the second floor actual footprint is much smaller. Uh, there is a track here at, at the gym. I want to just touch base quickly on the landscape functionality in that back area, because there was, um, sort of a question here. So, um, this front sort of gable has spaces for younger, um, members. So there is sort of a child watch area and then also we call sort of an adventure piece. So there's a play space, uh, for those students. So you get sort of the younger folks in this front piece of the building and then having some outdoor function associated with that age group right outside of it. This is sort of an intergenerational area, um, used for teens, seniors, really open community type of space. And so this space and this are really multifunctional. There's outdoor seating areas. There's raised planting beds for, um, gardening. There are, um, different sort of open areas, picnic spaces. So there's really a lot of multipurpose functionality here. And then we've got this bigger sort of pocket of outdoor space. And this is paved and it is adjacent to the, um, one of the wellness studios here. So the idea is that this could also be for outdoor yoga classes, fitness classes of different types, so that we can really take advantage of those, uh, warm wa- warm days. And then again, as, as you mentioned, there's this sort of dry creek bed piece here that has these great little bridges over it. So if folks want to connect from here to here, there's a really wonderful sort of pedestrian experience around the building as well, trying to encourage people to take advantage of all the Y has to offer, both, um, inside the building and outside the building.
Comments or questions from the board?
John?
No, not this time.
Just, just one comment. When you're talking about the poles on the, uh, front of the, my immediate thought went to Route 1 Saugus into a bowling alley that used to exist there. Having those poles, it, it, to me, it's...
Your gamers from living up that way.
I mean, it's, it, to me, it, it just looks nineteen fifties.
The idea we were thinking that with displayed columns and having the wood pieces in there and supporting this canopy that's at the sort of three quarter, two thirds height, was that one, it helps, the height of the canopy helps to break it up. But that we were also thinking displayed columns are really sort of tying in to some of this vernacular that we were seeing.
Yeah, I know. I think it's a stretch, but that's my opinion.
Other comments?
I, I agree with Bob. I, that's the least attractive part of the whole design, I think. I love what you're doing, but I think those poles are the least attractive part of it.
I mean, it was milliseconds. It, it, it just hit me like that. I said, oh, wow, Route 1 Saugus.
Yeah, I don't have that experience. I just, just looking at it aesthetically.
An old bowling alley that was up there.
I like the way you've used the gable ends to make it much more, uh, residential looking, facing the residential development and to break down the mass of the building facing that development. That's really great. I, I think overall, it's a very, very attractive thing that you're proposing. I, I kept looking at those staggered things, wondering, gee, they don't look quite right, but I don't... I haven't been to Saugus.
I love what you've done. It's beautiful. I don't like those.
It is. The rest of it really...
I like the broken aspect of it. I wish more buildings.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and it brings the massing down. It's really, and the part that's facing the high school actually is like the high school. With matching on both sides. Nicely done.
Don't get me going on that.
All right, never mind. Thank you.
Just one thing.
Any comments from the public now? Oh, John.
I just want to mention that when, uh, this was reviewed by members of the Cape Cod Commission, they, some people had the same concerns. And I assured them that when it comes to the planning board in Falmouth, that we had design review and that we would address that.
Were they concerned about those pillars?
Yes.
There was a member there that was concerned. And we had put together, um, sort of a memo addressing some of the concerns. Has, I don't know if that memo has been distributed to this board. We can certainly do that.
Okay, just wanted to share that, that's all.
I think the thing that makes them look nineteen fifty, and nineteen fifty happened in lots of places, actually, is the, the random tilt to it. Um, there were tables like that, there were chairs like that, and they came into style and mercifully went out. So maybe some thought to your pillars?
We can certainly think about it.
Make them the wood to make it warm. Nice. The other part is, is the height and the way the, uh, roof of the, the canopy, um, it's more nearly like a gas station.
Height?
Yeah, just have a big canopy like that.
So what we're trying to do is really hold this, tie the two sides together. So we've got this glossy connector in the middle, but we wanted something that, without it and, or doing something on a much smaller scale here, didn't feel as grand of an entry in trying to make that statement, that wow moment, so that as folks drive in and walk up to the front, that this feels like a significant entry piece. Doing something lower and smaller, we had tried some options originally and looking at that. It sort of got lost in the scale of it. So we made a bigger sort of gesture with this taller roof piece that spanned a wider breadth. It also then creates, um, some shade and just a little bit of covering at this front area here, where we assume there'll be a fair amount of activity for the coming and going.
Given the height where it connects to the building, did you try at all tilting it down to match more nearly the slope of the roof on the left?
We did actually look at doing more of a shed here instead of a flat roof. And it, it starts to really fight with the aesthetic of these gables here, because these forms are so distinct and the rest of it is sort of meant to be thin and, um, and sort of not... This is supposed to be the heavier massing piece. And then you've got this thin glass connector and this thin, um, awning. The, doing something that's sloped starts to detract from those gable pieces.
It'll be interesting to see what you think of next. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Emily Buck. I'm with Bowman Consulting and I'm going to walk through the, um, traffic study completed for the project. Let me just, there we go. Um, so this here shows our study area, um, intersection circled in red. Uh, we looked at for our capacity analysis and collected traffic volumes at those locations and also, um, looked at crash history to identify any existing safety concerns. Um, they include Brick Hill Road, starting on the left side of the page, Brick Hill Road at, uh, twenty-eight A, Brick Hill Road at the two Route twenty-eight ramps, um, Brick Hill Road at Gifford Street, and then also the site driveway on Brick Hill Road as well. We, to estimate the number of trips generated by the site, um, since it was a unique use, um, you know, usually you see the Institute of Transportation Engineers trip gen, uh, but knowing that, um, it might, you know, uh, be different from some of those, um, standard, uh, land uses, we looked at three nearby YMCA sites and collected data at those, um, in Swansea, Mass, Middleborough and West Barnstable. Um, so we looked at the traffic, uh, generated by those and compared it to the gross square footage to create a trip generation rate and then applied it to the proposed gross square footage for this site. Um, you can see the two highlighted columns on the top table show the, um, peak hour trip generation estimates with a hundred and seventy-two total in the weekday morning and just under two hundred in the weekday afternoon. Um, we completed capacity analysis for both, uh, peak summer and average month conditions. Uh, the bottom table summarizes the peak summer conditions, um, with the build or with project all the way to the right. Um, overall, we didn't see significant traffic-related impacts. We did identify the intersection of Brick Hill Road at, uh, Gifford Street had a higher crash rate for, um, than average. Um, so when we started looking at mitigation, we focused on some safety improvements at that intersection, um, based on that pattern, since we didn't see any significant, uh, traffic operation impacts. Um, so the project would also implement a number of transportation demand management, uh, measures or TDM measures, um, some of which have already been talked about, uh, some of the carpool, um, spaces. And these are all just to promote, um, other modes of transportation to the site rather than single occupancy vehicles, just to even further reduce overall impacts. Um, so looking at, um, staggering employee shifts outside of the commuter peak hours, uh, providing those carpool spaces, um, the, the sidewalk, sidewalk network that was shown, uh, that would connect to Brick Hill Road, uh, working, we could certainly work with, um, Cape Cod Regional Transit Agency to look at providing, um, a stop, uh, whether, I think it was mentioned, it could be accommodated, um, internal to the site. But, um, also certainly that sidewalk network connects the entrance to Brick Hill Road. And if they were, had a preference of stopping on Brick Hill Road, that would also be, um, you know, uh, accommodated. Um, certainly up to their, um, purview, if it works with their route. I don't think there is an addition, uh, an existing route on Brick Hill Road, uh, but certainly something that we can start that conversation. Um, but, uh, there would also be information on the, um, Cape Cod Regional Transit Agency DARTS program, um, to provide that service as well to employees and patrons. This continues the TDM measures, just providing bike racks on site, um, and lunchroom services so that employees don't have to leave the site and make additional trips at lunchtime. Uh, and then overall, you know, the, the location and proximity to the high school really promotes students walking to the site, um, from school and limiting the number of trips, um, from the high school, uh, to the site as it's so close and there would be a path. Um, so looking at some of the mitigation, this is what I was mentioning at the intersection of Brick Hill Road and Gifford Street. There was, um, a, a higher than average crash rate. We looked at some, uh, potential mitigation to help with safety improvements. Um, these included looking at, um, the, improving the pedestrian crossing times. Right now, they're not quite long enough to make it to the other side of the road during, um, the pedestrian phase. Uh, so looking at those and making it more accessible with, um, installing new push buttons for pedestrians. Um, also looking at the vehicle, uh, clearance intervals being the yellow and red times at the intersection to, um, further improve safety for vehicles turning left or traveling through, um, the intersection. Uh, and these would just focus on, um, you know, we really wanted to focus on completing that pedestrian network with folks, um, walking to the site from the high school or nearby residences and just creating that, uh, a safer pedestrian route, um, to, uh, encourage and, uh, encourage walking to the site.
So these are the lights already in existence up there at that point?
Yes, the Gifford Street, uh, yeah, that is a signalized intersection currently. Um, we would also look to, um, replace, to install the flashing yellow arrow. Right now, it has kind of that five-lens signal and that's kind of a, a recent safety countermeasure that has been identified and is preferred by, um, Mastha and Cape Cod Commission.
Who, who suggested, I'm, I'm just surprised that this has fallen on, on you guys to do that. Is that part of the Cape Cod Commission?
It was a condition of their approvals. Uh, and I believe now I'm handing it back over to Kevin, but certainly happy to answer any traffic questions.
No, I'm glad to see that. That was one of my questions, was about the lights and timing and the fact that you do have a light there. It helps when, uh, people are going to the site and leaving the site, because, uh, if there wasn't a signal there, it could be tough. I'm glad you're going to do some, uh, updating of it.
There's no anticipated night use of the building?
Night use? Um, I'm not sure if any of the programs, I think after school would kind of be the, the peak time of the building, which would coincide with the commuter peaks, which is, uh, which we analyze as part of our traffic analysis. Um, if there was use at night, I, I'm not certainly clear in the hours of operation, but, um, it certainly wouldn't align with commuter peaks and it would show even less or so impacts on the traffic operations, um, if that were to be the case.
Actually, it's a question. Is there anticipated night use of the site?
How do you define night use?
Oh, I don't know. Any kind of events that you're holding there after dark?
This time of year is four thirty.
Yeah, so the hours of operation are typically going to be till about eight thirty P.M.
Yeah, so...
And then on the weekends, much shorter.
So you'd really need some sort of lights at the foot of the, the driveway and on the opposite, wouldn't you? Whether it's a flashing yellow or...
The lighting plan did include, uh, lights throughout the driveway, the walkway.
No, I'm sorry. I meant like traffic lights, flashing lights? Like a yellow light?
At the, within, within the site?
Near the entrance to the site, so people on Brick Hill Road can realize, oh, that's where, they'll be able to see the lights you put to mark the, the entrance, but to slow people down?
There would be a sign located at the front of the site, um, which would be lit, presumably.
I mean, it's not required of the subdivision that's there.
No.
So, um, you know, in conclusion, this has been a lot of information. We received the engineering referral today and obviously haven't had a chance to respond to that. Um, we don't expect that this is going to be a one-night hearing. I would love it to be, uh, for a variety of reasons, but that was never our expectation. So I said earlier, this is a discussion between this board and, and our team. I just, you know, this is, this is something that really fills a need. This is, the community has been looking for something along these lines for a long time. Uh, I've been in Falmouth now for fourteen years and people were talking about the Y coming in a few years when I got here.
Only fourteen seems longer.
I know. Believe me. It is, this is not just a need for the town, it's a regional need. It is, this is not just a need for the town, it's a regional need. You asked about the size of the pool, it is a 25-meter pool, a 25-yard pool, and has the ability to expand to a 50-meter pool. If you're familiar with swimming, you have what's called long course swimming, which is 50 meters, so a 100-meter race would be down and back, or you have what's called short course, which is more common in the area, which is 25 yards, so 100-meter race would be four laps. So this would provide some flexibility in that, in what's offered in the area. It pains me to my core that this town does not have a swim team. I was a swimmer in my past life, and the fact that my kids don't have that opportunity without going pretty far field is something that has always bothered me. So I think that this is something that the town needs, the community needs, that the region needs. As you see here, the facility's goal is to promote health, youth development, and social responsibility that ultimately contributes to stronger and a more cohesive community. The proximity of this project to the high school is an incredible asset that I think is just so important as to why this location makes sense. We've given you a lot of information. We know we're coming back, because we're going to be revising plans to address comments from the plant, from the engineering department. I would be happy to address any questions, or if I can't, then turn it over to the team. But that is our initial presentation to you this evening.
Well, it's a very complete presentation, thank you. And to be able to read the Cape Cod Commission's report, that's a great report, really.
I'm sorry?
The Cape Cod Commission report, very informative, all the way around, good.
I have a comment, and Kevin knows that this is my perennial comment here. I'm very concerned about phosphorus levels, because this is above our main drinking water source, and it's fresh water, and it's phosphorus that contaminates the fresh water, and I don't know anything about the nitro system, as to whether that has any capacity to remove any phosphorus, or whether it is purely nitrogen, which isn't going to affect our drinking water. So you all are here, and I'm making the comment, and you all can hear it, and it's not just Kevin, too.
No, and that's something we can certainly address with our next round of submissions.
Oh, I know you would, Kevin, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? No? I'm curious, actually, I feel that the Lutheran Church deserves some credit.
I don't disagree.
Yes, that they have more or less yielded up their land for this really much-wanted public purpose. It's going to be great. I swam at the Y in Cambridge, I loved it, I was so surprised that there's no Y here, and that the only pools around here are like these bathtubs, they're little shorties. You go, what's the matter with this community? So this, this is going a long way towards that. It's really great, and it's going to be very good-looking, thank you. Thank you very much. And now, I will study your planting plan. I really like planting plans, and I like the names of things, but I'm not sure where they'll be. So thank you, all the way around.
That, the schedule I provided is reflected on the planting plan.
Right.
And I can provide that in a better copy than what I just handed you tonight.
Right, I'll match it up. So Melinda, when will we be back? You have a lot of to be reviewed bys on that report.
And part of those to be reviewed bys are part of the natural process.
Right.
So, you know, we anticipate going to the zoning board. They mentioned having Building Department review that, but Building Department does review that as part of their referral system to you here and through the zoning board. So I, I think that the bigger review issues are responding to engineering's direct questions. Everything else, you know, we'll be going to the Board of Health, we'll be going to this, you know, we've already been, we'll be going to the zoning board, we'll be addressing those comment, a lot of those comments just through the natural permitting process.
Right.
But I think, you know, we have to address, obviously, the specific engineering concerns, comments, grading, anything along those lines.
The drainage, the stormwater, yeah, so timing.
So we have November 26th, which is in two weeks, or December 10th, which is in four weeks?
I would love to say the 26th, but I suspect we need more time. We need much more time. December 10th, is that, okay.
Okay. The 26th?
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, December 10th.
I said, I would love to say the 26th, but that's not going to give us enough time to get submissions to you in time.
Okay, so we're going to the December 12th?
December 10th.
10th, mm-hmm, 10th, fine.
And if we find that we need some more time, we'll reach out.
Yep. Okay, so we'll continue this till December 10th?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Planning for discussion, let's, we'll get room cleared and we'll hear that. Planning Board Department report. Melinda, are you planning to make a report, or you want to wait for Jed?
I have a small report.
Okay, great.
That precinct meetings have started, there have been two so far, and overall, there haven't been any big oppositions to any of the articles. There's just been a few comments, but nothing, you know, that looks like it's going to hold anything up, hopefully. And you were at the last one, as well?
Well, and I went to eight and nine, also up at the...
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, I did. I'd like to go, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
No, it was interesting, I went to my first one on Thursday, so.
What, that was your first one?
That was my first one.
And that's usually the most crowded one?
Mm-hmm, it was pretty crowded.
Unless there's some, you know, big hoo-ha going on.
Yeah.
That's it?
That's it for that, for right now, yeah.
Any questions for the Planning Department? Future agenda items?
Committee reports?
Oh, it's not even on, excuse me, committee reports? Oh, we look to you.
I did attend the water quality management committee meeting, and there were a couple of updates, particularly about the outfall, et cetera. However, I was not able to put the package together for tonight, so I'll bring it in next time.
Okay. Other committee reports?
If I can just comment, everything is moving very nicely. Everyone seems to be in support of the outfall, and it approves certain areas, but I'll give you more detail at the next meeting.
Oh, did you know that, Pat?
No.
Oh. So as long as we're talking about committees, Pam, served on some committees. You're welcome as a member to attend any committee meeting you want. If you want to be a representative of the Planning Board on a committee, you would make a request to say, I would really like to represent...
You're not looking at me, are you?
No, I'm looking at the new member.
Tom is the focus of this one.
Yes, I...
You know, fresh blood.
So I make a request? Yes, the Affordable Housing Committee?
Affordable Housing?
Yeah.
Okay. This is good?
Yeah, Pam's been on that question.
Yes, she was.
But, but so is John, he's in China, right?
Not anymore, he's...
I was never on that committee.
Anyway, he's just interested in it and builds in it. He's our Cape Cod Commission guy. Everybody in accord with Tom representing us there?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And if you see other things that you want to do, just, just let us know. Okay, any announcements? The Planning Department had an announcement.
I have a committee report also.
Oh.
Just for this board and for the general public, Cape Cod Commission is holding hearings on their, to revise their regional policy plan. So we've had a meeting in Eastham, we've had a meeting in Mashpee, we're going to some of the various towns, but we're also having them online. And should anybody that's interested, we're discussing, of course, housing, traffic, conservation, et cetera, et cetera. So this is about six years ago was the last time they did the regional policy plan. So it's really important, and it's really interesting. So anyone interested in going online, because most of our meetings are online, can sign in, and we take public testimony, and we want to hear from the public.
How are, how are these being advertised, John, so that people in Falmouth, we would know, but then how would others know?
I think go to their site plan, their site, Cape Cod Commission site.
Mm-hmm. Is there any way to put that on the town website?
I can ask Jed.
Because, you know, there seems like a big distance from us, but at some point, it will hit us.
Some of the, some of the towns, the Planning Board has been posting it on their webpage also.
Yep, we can, I'll, I'll ask Jed about it, and we'll definitely get it up there if...
I'm, I think in particular, like the Affordable Housing Committee, they have a lot of great ideas, and they could participate in this, and any of the other venues, traffic, et cetera, et cetera.
Do you see them changing direction on any of their main things from the plan?
Well, we're just taking testimony right now.
Uh-huh, okay. Good to know, thank you. Jim?
I know Peter Freeman from Kimco, he's the lawyer for Kimco, I know him because of Kendall Lane, he represented that. So he called me today, and I said, well, you really should call Jed. Jed's not here, so we probably didn't get the message.
He, he contacted him through email.
Oh, yes, and so he requested, he wants to be able to, can Kimco speak at town meeting? And I think that was between Jed and you, whether you wanted that to happen or not. They wanted to make a presentation.
I think Jed talked to you about it.
He did, he did. And what he wants to do is speak in favor of the article that we've put forward. So he's not there to argue with what we're proposing, he's there to speak in favor of it. Right.
It just needs permission from town meetings, so it's a whole process.
Because he's out of town, right.
Right, no, he needs permission, but he's wanting the, the Planning Board to support him in doing that. So do you see any reason why we should not?
No, I think it's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
I just said he needed to get approval, and it didn't, I thought it would have come up. It was going to be silent on it, but no one brought it up, so I thought I...
You're right.
I had to bring it up.
Good, okay, and yes, and certainly, I would speak in favor of his approving what we're doing, it would help. Right.
Yeah, it's not my job, but I do know him, that's why he called me.
Well, stuff happens.
Okay. Can I just comment?
Yep.
The precinct meeting, one and two, last Thursday night downstairs, the captain of precinct one who runs a meeting, mentioned to me before the meeting, and he was very confused by all the articles proposed by the Planning Board, and that he was wanting to postpone all the votes until May, or till April, I guess. And I said to him, we've been working on this for three or four years, been the outside council, inside council, we have consultants there who are dealing with it, and we're trying to clean up a lot of issues there. And he said, are you prepared to comment on it? And I said, no, Jed is here, and he'd be willing to comment on it. I thought he did a great job of explaining it at the precinct meetings, and the issues seemed to be dropped.
Who, who is that?
Doug Jones.
Still?
Doug Jones is the chair.
You were there, so you...
Yes, I was, and what he had to say was, and he sounded really quite put out by the whole thing, that why is it that the Planning Board, very soon after we, we put in a warrant article and it's approved, so we now have a new bylaw, why do we then have revisions so soon? We should be thinking this through more thoroughly to begin with, so that we don't have to do that. And he, as a result, was thinking of not dealing with them, and definitely was scolding the Planning Board and the Planning Department, but mostly the Planning Board, for not doing a better job. Jed really countered it very nicely. Oh, and he also didn't like, Doug Jones didn't like the confused way it was being presented, because I don't know if you've seen the warrant book, light green cover, in the warrant book, the way our zoning changes are being presented, is first there's a complete print of what exists, so there's, in effect, the old one, and then in the next pages, there's the new one, but it's hard to go back and forth from the old one to the new one, when they're like that, pages apart. So at the back of the book, there is also another one, where the old and the new are distinguished from one another by color, so it's red and black print, and you can tell what's old and you can tell what's new. And I don't know why he was having trouble with that organization, because if you took any time to study the book, it seemed clear enough, didn't you think? I thought. But no, apparently it wasn't clear to everybody, because that's the way people are, everyone sees things differently, and he was annoyed by it. So Jed was just reacting to his annoyance, and standing up for us, which I appreciated. That was good. You're right, I wasn't going to bring that up.
Well, I think it's important.
It is.
I think it's very important.
Yes.
We're in the risk of putting it off till April after all these years.
Really, really. Well, and the Select Board, doing indefinite postponement on the short-term rental, same thing. Putting it off after, after the work that's been done on it, saying that there wasn't enough time. However, I heard some backstory on that, so we'll see about that also.
So are you planning to make a positive motion at town meeting floor on that?
Yes, I am. I hope you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
On what the, what the...
I would hope so.
Yeah, really.
No, it's just nice, I, tomorrow morning, I meet with the group that's against it, and I just wanted, but we meet every Wednesday in my office, while the realtors do.
Well, yes, yes.
Charlotte, you getting second thoughts?
No. Well, I've heard a lot of things about it, since that they could take the form of second thoughts, but I don't think that they really improve on anything. The only one I've heard that makes sense to me is, if the effective date is a problem, because this is November, and it would take effect next year, calendar year, that is really precipitous. So maybe the best thing to do is to put the effective date off another year. But rather than starting all over, just moving the effective date, we take the work that we have, and we move it forward. And if there's a sense that we need to hear from more people, believe me, we will. So maybe that's the way to go. Maybe there, could you think of any other? I think if we keep the, the positive motion, the amendment to what we proposed, simple enough, we stand a very good chance of prevailing over the Select Board's recommendation for indefinite postponement.
We're talking about short-term rentals now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's about the short-term rentals.
Should we be talking about this right now, though?
Yeah, no, I was just coming...
Because it wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm just reporting.
Yeah, it's, it's a report on a precinct meeting, so we're kind of...
We were talking about precinct meetings and town meeting, although it was the subject of, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I know. But we're going into more detail.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, I don't care, but it could be a complaint.
Oh, well, we don't want any complaints. So if you have further thoughts on other positive motion, potential amendments, please let me know, before next week would be good. So I don't, yeah.
Is there a meeting prior to town meeting this year?
Yeah.
Have we posted one?
Yes. Yep, I think it's the way it usually is, it's a half an hour before.
So, yes, so there is going to be a meeting Monday before town meeting, starts at 6:30 at Lawrence School, and we do have an application, an A and R, that's going to be on that, so we need you to show up.
So something to talk about.
Yes.
So I can't just stay at home with my cup of tea waiting for town meeting, I have to...
You have to come. In fact, Tom, you might not have realized that, I'm sorry. We, on town meeting days, it usually means that we're, we're missing a meeting, so things that have come in that need to be dealt with, we can do it then. There isn't always something, but there will be this time, but it's an A and R, so it'll go quickly. But it's also a chance for all of us to be on the same page about whatever town meeting is going to address that's Planning Board business.
I also post one for the next night, Tuesday, just in case something comes up and we have to meet at last minute, but it's typically canceled, we don't usually have it, we don't usually meet, there's no, usually no reason to, but the room is booked and there'll be agenda posted, just in case.
Okay. Mostly you have to come in...
Town meetings are in the classroom.
Okay.
Aside from the town, outside, so...
It's, I think it's 107, on the first floor.
It's on the first floor.
It will be on the agenda.
First floor, one of the classrooms on the left.
You just wander around till you find it.
[laughing].
I'll make a motion, will you, Jerry?
Nope, no, not yet.
Wait, wait, general correspondent?
Yeah, and we have some. Yes.
Future agenda items.
Right, and once again, looking at our new member, these are great. When I was a new member, I went to several of them, and I learned a lot. And here's one thing you could definitely learn, one of them, adopting and revising rules and regulations, is being run by Brian Currie. Do you remember his name, Tom? He, he was the town planner for how many years?
Oh, that's right.
I think 24, 23, long time.
Yeah, and he's gone on to do consulting and training and so forth. So what he's saying applies definitely right here.
Yeah, there's some really good webinars here.
And examples are from here.
Does the town reimburse us the $35 to attend, you said?
It does not. Or you could take it out of what we pay you.
Where are these classes?
They're Zoom webinars.
They're on Zoom.
Yep.
100% Zoom.
They're all Zoom.
They're great, yeah.
Should I go see if the fair housing one? I have to take a fair housing class every three years for my real estate license, I wonder if I...
I bet it counts.
Where's Brian these days?
Sure.
I was gonna check with him.
Teaching webinars?
They both do by the end of the year, so.
Right.
Is that the real estate license?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that one looked really pretty good, but the other one, I thought looked pretty good, is, okay, so this is just like an ad, is the planning and community support one? I don't know the person who's giving it, Ezra Glenn, from Ironman Valley, but I'm sure well-qualified and so forth, they're careful about these people. But say we have to be doing our comprehensive plan, which we do, in order to bring it into accord with the Cape Cod Commission's format, this would be a good thing for all of us to have seen and listened to, to just, you know, see what we should do as far as good community support, to be sure that we get enough input to make it a useful plan. That'd be good. And if you look through them, you might find something else that you've got a lot of big questions about.
Right.
Right. If there are procedures for running meetings, I would take that, considering I could use it. But anyhow, they run good workshops. So thank you for this notice.
And just before...
Okay, Paul, now your motion.
Just before we adjourn, I just wanted to clarify that the next meeting is Monday, November 18th, it's a Monday, and then the, the following meeting is Tuesday, November 26th. Yeah, and that's right before Thanksgiving.
Right.
And we did talk about that previously. Let me just make sure I have that correct.
Means that people who are having company for two weeks can get out of the house.
Magic words.
Yes. And that's it.
Okay, so now we move adjournment?
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.